Thank you Neil for keeping us on task.
Thank you.
We're starting with flag.
To the flag, America is America, and it is the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Welcome, Mr. DeVita. We have George DeVita here this evening. George is a fifth grade teacher over at Latimer Lane School. And we thought it would be nice to bring George out tonight and hear a little bit about some of the cool things he's doing with his students and recognize him. So I'm going to give this over to Sue, who's going to tee it up a little bit, but he got his hands around a really kind of innovative grant that he's working with the kids on, which is really interesting.
So this past fall, George went with Melanie Meehan to a social studies conference. And there were representatives there from the Mohegan Group. And they had a grant. And George said, I'm going to apply for the grant. First, I'm going to see what it's all about, then I'm going to apply for it, and then I'm going to get that grant. So George received a grant, and it had implications for students and it had implications for teachers. So this grant allowed all fifth grade teachers to come together to learn more about the Mohegan people and how we can appropriately represent their contributions to our state within the curriculum. So that was exciting. And all of our fifth grade students had the opportunity to attend the Tanta Queudron Museum and see what that was all about and immerse themselves in the traditions and histories of the Mohegan people. And that was all made possible because George took that initiative and made it happen for his students, but also his teaching peers. So we just wanted to take a moment to recognize this. Good work. Fantastic.
Thank you. Awesome. Have we taken the field trip already?
The field trip is next this coming week. We had, they came to us and did a presentation for all of the fifth grade.
That's awesome.
That's very good.
Thank you for taking the initiative.
Congratulations. Thank you. Awesome.
Does he also want to share?
No, they also gave us a thousand dollars, which was really nice to supplement the library curriculum with Native Peoples writings, books to tell the stories. So the kids will have that legacy. I, it was for the classroom, but I told Mike that we would use it in the library, so it's kind of there for kids for, you know, years to come, so that when they do study and do read about Native Peoples in the curriculum and they'll have a resource to go to. This is great.
Really good.
Great job.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Will this, will this be available for every business?
I mean, sorry, yeah. Public audience, anybody? Committee reports.
Okay, so for Terrifield specifically, they had their art show and their talent show. And they also had the invention convention, and two students will be heading to UConn. So that's cool. And then Latimer's doing a whole school cultural program called Belonging Through Dance that will take place this Friday during the school day. Henry James, they're halfway through this year's musical, The Addams Family, and then the next three performances will be done on Friday and two on Saturday. They also, Henry James will also have their next parent education series, which will be held on April 1st from 6:30 to 8:00. It will focus on AI, social media, and online safety. And then lastly, the high school, we had 414 students participate in the Pi Day run. And...
Too bad it wasn't 314.
I know.
Oh, that would've been so much better.
I guess this is better tomorrow. And then students also had an opportunity to do a job shadow on March 19th, and several students took advantage of that. And then also, seven debaters on the debate team qualified for CDA finals, and the team placed first in the varsity division of March CDA tournament. So that's cool, too. And then spring sports are underway with 550 students signed up to participate. And then the spring play is getting ready for their spring performance.
Busy time.
Yeah, it's busy.
Thank you. Josh.
No, no committee updates, just basically mentioned the Terrifield Talent Show. I'd attended that and just, you know, kudos to all the kids for doing that and all the volunteers for helping to put that in, right? It's a lot of work, working with all the kids to make that happen. So just wanted to thank them publicly for their work.
That's all right. Jess.
Nothing to report?
Right.
Nothing to report right now.
Yeah, it's, we're in the right, in the thick of the middle of the legislative session. So hearings are continuing as we speak, and some of the actions are obviously, I'm talking about Hartford, here we are in a state in education funding, paraeducators. The working group, they want to establish a working group to address antisemitism in schools. So this would be another working group added to the working groups that we already have. Teacher recruitment, retention, and there's another act here that requires boards of boards of education to post curriculum online. Definitions of curriculum are varied in broad making and broad, making this requirement unworkable. So we'll see where this one goes on that area. But that's where we are at the moment in Hartford, submitting testimonies and, you know, appearing at the Capitol and meeting with everybody there. But, you know, the basic thing is it's just advocacy. We don't want a lot of the mandates to come without the funding. And this is a very critical and difficult time. We're thankful that we are getting that money that the governor has allocated in the budget, so that's going to be important. On the national front, I don't even have to explain to you what's going on there. It's just a moving target, target every day with what is happening. So again, we are still on the Hill in DC, doing the same thing that we're doing here in Hartford, Connecticut, you know, just about the funding levels, IDEA and a few of the other things that we're concerned about. And the elimination of the Education Department is something that you all have been reading about and know about, but, but the funding will be coming through for the districts at least through the end of the year. But we'll see where we go with this. So everything is very tumultuous. You know, I wish we had better news to say at where we are right now, but this is the state of the state. I think we just have to really concentrate on what's going on in Hartford and Connecticut, you know, that's going to affect our districts. But, but that's where we are. So it is, it is a difficult year and will not finish until June, when they will adopt the budget by June, end of, middle of June. So that is it.
Sure. Jen?
So last night, we had another meeting of the Simsbury High School Trojan Committee, I believe is the official name. And there's continued, it was really interesting, there was a guest speaker, and they're talking about just how to better prepare or allow for kids to see more of their options besides just a four-year track. And how do we help our high schoolers navigate all the different paths that are out there? For that one, so it was really interesting, and more to come.
Karen?
Nothing, thank you. We have about three dozen students participate in the state DECA business competition at the AquaTurf about three weeks ago. And from those three dozen students, 16 of them qualified to compete at the International DECA Conference in Orlando at the end of April. So led by Mr. Stanwood and other members of the Business Department, we're excited to see how the students perform, and I will update you and let you know the results, but we're really excited that that many students are performing at the international level. It's exciting.
Fantastic. Neil?
Nothing for tonight.
Dave?
Thanks.
Dave? Nothing for me. Mr. Superintendent.
I would just want to say that we had an opportunity to present the operating budget to the Board of Finance on April 4th. 3.91% increase over last year's operating costs, which was the Board of Ed approved number. They have moved that number on and that budget on to the public hearing, which will take place April 8th in the library at, is it 5:45?
Six.
Six o'clock, where you will have an opportunity to present that budget to the public. So the process continues to move, but I've been pretty appreciative, and I know you have been of the collaborative effort.
All right. First on the agenda is the approval of the February 25th meeting minutes.
Let me make motions to approve the minutes.
Give me a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Personality. Yes, and it's that time of year where people who have been thinking about retirement finally make some key decisions to let us know. So there are actually four that have come in in the last month, three of them from the high school. Start with science teacher Roseanne Calandro. Roseanne actually did about half of her time in Simsbury at Henry James before she transferred to Simsbury High School, where she's been a key player in the forensics curriculum. Dan Deanna is 25 years in the English department. This one is full circle for me because Dan was pretty much the first teacher I hired as an assistant principal when I started in Simsbury High School. So to see him now 25 years later, he's just a young pup moving here from Arizona. And is going to be able to enjoy retirement and do some traveling after 25 years. Shira Flowers, 20 years in Simsbury. I met Shira in 1992 when she had the desk next to mine in the teaching office at Farbington High School. So been a long time colleague, 20 years in Simsbury. And then Christine Golden, who has done administrative work here at Simsbury. And then at the end of her career, decided to go back to her roots and become a social worker at Tooten Hills, where she has been really a right-hand person for Angelina Belmonte over the last few years. Glad to see that she's going to get to enjoy her retirement. So about 83 years of experience on the page there tonight, and the most of they, they all are effective June 30th, if someone would like to move that.
I will. I move that the Board of Ed accept the retirements of Roseanne Calandro, Daniel Deanna, Shira Flowers, and Christine Golden, effective June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's, it's a big, it's a big loss. I'm very happy that they get retired, but they were, these are all very, very dedicated to every student that they ever had. It's just been, we were very fortunate to have had them for as long as we have.
Enjoy your retirement.
But we'll miss you.
Yeah, definitely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And then, not for your action, but just to follow the bouncing ball after we had a resignation in around Christmas time this year for a special ed teacher at Latimer Lane. Kendra Kokel was hired from Windsor Public Schools in sometime in January, tendered her resignation there, usually about a month before we can get hold of a teacher in mid-year. So she started for us at Latimer on February 24th. The other special ed teachers in Latimer covered the gap for about six or seven weeks. And we're thrilled that Kendra got to get going on February 24th, so. Fantastic. Acceptance of the gift to First Robotics.
Yes, we actually have three gifts and a scholarship for your consideration tonight. So in keeping with your policy, 2,311, any gifts to the Simsbury Public Schools that exceed $1,500 require board approval. So the first gift is in the amount of $5,000 from United Therapeutics Corporation, and this donation would be, the recipient would be the SHS Robotics Club to be able to use for supplies and cover expenses. So there is a motion there for your consideration.
I'll move that the proposed gift of $5,000 to the SHS Robotics Club by United Therapeutics Corp. be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's fantastic.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The second gift from your consideration is from the Simsbury Youth Hockey Association, and they would like to donate $2,000 to be used to offset the cost of ice time for rental. And so the gift would, the gift recipient would be Simsbury High School Athletics and Student Activities.
I move that the proposed gift to Simsbury High School Athletics and Student Activities from the Simsbury Youth Hockey Association Incorporated of $2,000 be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The third gift would be to the SHS Fencing Club, and the gift is from Matthew and Lynette Whitmer in the amount of $1,500. And the gift would be used to purchase fencing supplies, equipment, and may also be used for transportation purposes.
I move that the proposed gift of $1,500 from Matthew and Lynette Whitmer be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you to Whitmers.
That's a, that's a club.
Thank you very much.
It's amazing gift.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
And now on to the scholarship. So each year, usually a Simsbury High School graduate would be the recipient of the Granby Simsber, Granby, Granby Simsbury Chamber of Commerce Scholarship. And typically, the chamber has their own committee, but they would like to turn that process over to our internal process at the high school. So this would require formal approval of this scholarship on behalf of the board. The scholarship is in the amount of $750. It's an increase from what your exhibit shows right here, but I have confirmed that. Lydia has been a great conduit to make sure that this happens, and there is a motion there for your consideration this evening.
I move that the Board of Ed approve the Granby Simsbury Chamber of Commerce Scholarship to be dispersed in 2025.
Would just like to put in a little, oh, second.
I'll second.
Okay, second.
And a little caveat on this, normally, as Sue had mentioned, we have done this in-house ourselves under the chamber, but we decided that it just would be, you know, a better process to have the high school do that. We are also donating the same amount, $750, to a senior at Granby High School. So this incorporates both, both high schools of both communities that are part of the chamber. So two lucky students will be, will be getting that, that award. And so that is it. Please, oh, I just noticed, thank you, Sharon, my phone number is a number of digits on here, so just avoid that, delete that.
One, two, three, four, five.
All approved in second?
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Tooten Hills roof, is the case.
Yes. So we're on track for our Tooten Hills partial roof replacement coming up this summer. Along to do that, we have to have these three motions made for our state reimbursement. The first two motions is your acceptance of the plans and drawings. These have already been accepted by the Town Building Department, Fire Marshal, and Health officials. So after approving that, there's one additional motion where the superintendent and BOE Chair requests a review by the state. So those are the three motions before you tonight.
Great. Anybody want to kick it off?
I agree.
Thanks.
Move to approve the final plans and project manual dated March 6, 2025, prepared by JH Architects LLC for the Tooten Hills School Reroofing and Related Work Project.
Second.
Great, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to approve the Tooten Hills Schools Reroofing Project Budget Cost Estimate, dated March 6, 2025, prepared by JH Architects LLC in the amount of $921,437.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to approve the Superintendent Matthew T. Curtis and Board Chair Jeff Tyndall to sign the Department of Administrative Services from SCG 042 to request a review of the final plans and project manual prepared by JH Architects LLC for the Tooten Hills Schools Reroofing Related Work Project.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the cancellation of the April 8 regular meeting. Do you want to take that or you want? I was saying, because I mean, as Matt said, it's the public hearing day.
We will be meeting anyway.
Yes, we will.
And hopefully with people from the area.
To cancel the Board of Education, schedule on April 8, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Information reports. First up is the Library Media Program Report.
Yes, and I would just say now that we're through the, we're not through the budget in its entirety, but through the bulk of it, we line up our program reviews and bring out staff to have an opportunity to go through some of the exciting work and talk about some of the challenges that are faced with really being informative to the board. So we've invited some folks out this evening that Sue's going to introduce. It's good to see everybody. Thank you for coming out.
Terrific. So I have some pretty incredible members on my teaching and learning team, and that includes Dave Prinstine as our Director of Instructional Technology. Dave wears many hats, and one of them is to oversee our library media centers, which are true hubs of teaching and learning in each one of our seven schools. So tonight, Dave is joined by our library media specialist, Kelly Callahan, former elementary school teacher turned library media specialist, and comes over to Henry James this year, which we're so excited about. And our incredible library media specialist at Squadron Line School, not only is he a fashion icon, but also a wealth of information, Mr. Jamie Seeta. And tonight, they're going to share celebrations around what happens each and every day at the Library Media Center, talk about some of the leadership and program priorities that they've been focused on this year, what's up and coming, what's in the future for library media, and what are some potential financial implications, as well as some continued support that they are hoping to receive. So Dave, I turn it over to you and your team.
Thanks, Sue. And like Sue mentioned, in this capacity, I lead the library media team. We are a team of eight, seven media, library media specialists, one in each building, and me. We meet weekly just to make sure that we're on the same page. What we're hoping to do tonight, and thank you so much for making time for us, is to paint a picture of a library media team and a program here in Simsbury that is really at the middle of a lot of the work that we're doing here in Simsbury, leading the way for our schools, our students, our teachers toward all of these 21st century skills that we talk so much about and that we believe so much in. And along with those 21st century skills, the vision of the graduate also, those two things are sort of inexorably tied. The story that we're going to tell you tonight about sort of our day-to-day and our month-to-month and our year-over-year work, hopefully will honor three themes. Number one, technology, support, and leadership through our library media centers and our library media specialists, support of the vision of a graduate from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. And then last, but certainly not least, the traditional role of the library program, which is, you know, for lack of a better term, just fostering that love of reading in all of our students. So those three themes, we're going to try to paint you a picture of. So right now, the current state of our library media centers, and if you, throughout the presentation, a big part of the story is actually the physical space itself. We have, we'll have a picture of all seven of our libraries at different points in the presentation. But we were talking this morning, and we were really excited to be able to share that because they're so different. So we tried to capture different sort of views and characters of these physical spaces, which in school buildings are really characters, you know. One of the things that we want to make sure at each of our seven buildings is that the library really is a hub, that, you know, located in the center of the building, a lot of the activity curricularly, socially, is flowing out of that center. We also want to make sure that we are supporting the curriculum in each building, working with teachers, infusing literature and resources to make sure that they have everything that they need and that students have everything they need when they visit our libraries also. One of the most important things that you'll hear about tonight are the infusion of these critical thinking skills, these problem-solving skills, coming right from our vision of a graduate. From the earliest ages in our elementary schools, we prioritize being a place where we're teaching kids how to evaluate sources, how to cite those sources at a later age, and really by the time they get to high school, they're off and running with those inquiry skills. And then last, but not least, as, as part of a modern library media program, we really want to be also that hub where technology is getting integrated into teaching and learning, where our librarians are sort of leading the way with staff development and early adoption, and really being those technology evangelists that are out in front of a lot of this work that we're doing. So that's the picture that we're going to paint you, and again, we're thrilled to be here.
So I'm going to go over some of the program highlights and celebrations that we have within what we do in our departments. First of all, we have the Vision of Graduate video series. You can go on our website and see that. The library media specialist team has been working together in planning and creating these Vision of Graduate videos. And they feature themes across our schools that illustrate the different Vision of Graduate competencies that are in action. And so we've been focused on, you know, different schools, different age groups, and so please, you know, definitely take the time to go and see them. Another thing that, that we're doing at Henry James, I started actually a news network this year. I was very, I did dabble a little bit at this at Squadron Line with the student, student collision, but I recruited, Big Soul had to help me, and we have these students, they are naturals. I mean, you are, will see them on the news someday. Here, I'm so nervous, they get right up and they get it done. They write their own scripts, they, they're reporters, they're anchors, they, they're behind the camera, they're editing, they, they're sending formal emails to teachers, community leaders, and they keep coming to me and saying, can I do the spotlight, can I do the spotlight? I said, you just go for it. So it's been a lot of fun. You have to see them in action. Another thing that we like to celebrate is our STEM labs and our maker spaces. A few of our schools have these spaces, and it's great because they're newly designed and they feature STEM and making opportunities. This helps the students with engineering, robots, robotics, which I'm thinking of, which has gone on at high school level, we're getting them ready for that. Also collaboration with each other, and those, again, those critical problem-solving skills. Mike McKenna, our library media specialist at the high school, has done a great job of reworking the Simsbury High School space by making it again a 21st century space, no longer where the kids just go in and it's, you know, they're doing their work. He has created a space for, for different zones, where there's quite study space, but then he has a space for collaboration. He also has a space for social or SEL. And him and his team are modernizing the library and resetting the expectations for the high school students to utilize this incredible space that, that is in that school. And the last thing I'm going to highlight on this is, we are so blessed to have the McGowan Grants. So many school, you know, so many people have benefited from this. I've used it at Squadron in my 12 years there. But two of the things that happened in the library media centers at Tooten Hills, Susan McAndrea used it to update all her shelving signage. Now, you think that's just like, well, what, you know, how is that really helpful? But now, when children go into that library, they can find exactly what they need. It's, it's very kid-friendly, it's clear, they're able to find things instantly. And then Marty Heegney created this very inviting student seating area. So there's some of the things we're celebrating, and that's actually a little space right there that you can see in the slideshow.
Awesome, thanks, Kelly.
So I get to talk a little bit about the day-to-day, all right? We've broken things down into current priorities, just to kind of keep it clean for you. But basically, you can see we've highlighted three different things, the curriculum review, some student inquiry, and the vision of the graduate. And I'd like to take each in turn and then give you an example about, kind of about how all of those things can work together. The first thing in the curriculum review is, of course, the age-old question of public education. What do we teach the kids, right? That's been the struggle since the beginning of time. Well, in the library, we teach them a range of things. Starts with library skills, right? We want all of our kids, people walk into any library and to become independent library users. We talk about location, access, and making good choices. And by making good choices, if you hear me in the library, I'm going to tell kids, I want you to go home happy, right? Because when kids come into the library, we want them to walk away with the bit of information that they came in for, the answer that they wanted, or a good book. And I'm here to report that it's working. I had kindergarten classes this morning, and kids were finding the things that they're interested in, even if it was the Battle of the Reptiles and who would win? Kids were bouncing out of the room because that's exactly what they came for and that's what they wanted. We also teach tech skills routinely as well. Of course, every student in our district is lucky enough to have their own device. So what we try to do is to teach high-leverage tech skills at the point of need, and that's important. They're not taught in isolation, they're taught at the point of need, so kids can use technology to be able to forward their learning. It's not technology for technology's sake, but in service of their learning. And something that I'd like to also point out is that even though I'm talking about curriculum, and it sounds like I'm talking about library curriculum, right? Our curriculum is actually laid right over the top of the district curriculum. It works hand in hand. We collaborate with teachers every day to provide kids learning opportunities that work into the curricular areas that they're learning about anyway, right? So we model processes and skills in the library, right, in collaboration with teachers that are relevant and integrated to that curricular unit. that are relevant and integrated to that curricular unit, whatever it might be, whether it's science or whether it's social studies or something else. This is not something in isolation that they don't see. Again, it works within the curriculum. And that's, I think, an important point to remember when we do this. One of the ways we do this is my second point, through the student inquiry process. We spend some time on inquiry to allow kids to make their own meaning out of the world, right? I mean, we believe it's important for kids to evaluate information and think critically about the world. And so by doing inquiry projects with kids, we allow them to take some control over that as they work. The inquiry process is also multi-step. It's nonlinear. I know that people like to talk about things like grit and resilience and this. This is a natural, I see people smiling, right? We talked about this, right? This is a natural way to get kids to do this, right? You give them an information problem to solve and they have to bring all these resources to bear. So it's a great experience in doing this. Some of our discussions now are like, where do we put these things, right, to make the maximum impact? We're always trying to think about that when it comes to time. Along with that is my last point in the vision of the graduate, right? When we talk about the vision of the graduate, one of the things that you'll notice, right, if you know anything about problem solving models, is how much the vision of the graduate looks like something like that. And so these are natural places to work with kids when we talk about vision of the graduate, right? We start them young and it ends with the capstone, of course, right, in high school. But we work all the way along to scaffold things so that kids can understand the process and be more fluid in doing these things as they move through their grade levels. In any single inquiry project, if you were to highlight the things that we approached in one of these projects, you will see that the vision of the graduate would light up. We're doing this with kids as young as kindergarten. And if you'll indulge me, I'm just going to take a moment to tell you about a conversation I had with a second grade teacher yesterday. She emailed me and said, you know, I'd like to zhuzh up my second grade insect unit. Can we talk? And it was a couple of days before we could, right, because everybody's so busy. So I was able to, right, take a look at her planning time, stopped down and it was convenient for her. And we talked about what she wanted this to look like. She said, you know, I really, I remember some of those research things that you were doing before. Can we incorporate some of that? And I said, yeah, sure, let's do that. So we talked about allowing kids, again, to use the resources that we pay for in our libraries. We have a virtual library to be able to collect information after they brainstorm questions about, well, what do I want to know, right? We offer them choice on what they want to learn about, which by the way, very motivating, right, for little kids especially. They're going to locate information, they're going to do some note taking, they're going to synthesize things. And then she said to me, you know, while we're at this, the reading department has also discovered that it might be nice if we could work on reading fluency with these kids. Is there a way to record their voices so that when they're reading, right, they can listen back, right, and work on their fluency? I said, alright, let's think about this. So not only are we doing the research piece, we're also going to do a product or a project at the end. And they're seven year olds, so, right, we have to consider that. It has to be something simple that they can do. But here is where we also are again impacted by technology. We're going to have them do a Google slide, right? There's a Google slide. How nice. A picture, maybe a caption, but the added value to this is that they're also, I found a quick and easy way so that they can make that slide into a video. They're going to be able to read some of the things they learned about whatever this is that they're studying into that. They can practice it, they can do it multiple times till they pick one that's good for them, right? So working on their fluency, listening back, it even gives them a little thumbnail of themselves in the video. They're going to love this, right? And so they're going to be able to do that, to work on fluency too. So look what we've done. One project in one grade level, right, probably four lessons with me, right? But this is going to be a rich, powerful, efficient way to meet so many goals in our curriculum. Not just inquiry, VOG, curricular goals. And the kids love it. It's fun, it's engaging. This is the kind of stuff that we like to do routinely in the library. And that's why we come to you for this support, so that you know that this is what we're doing to help us to forward this work. Speaking of forwarding the work, we're going to talk about some challenges and opportunities, I think, with Kelly.
So engaging student readers. I mean, we're definitely living in a different time for reading. Let's face it. We're battling against phones, kids, year round sports. Children have, you know, different interests and time. So we're constantly, you know, focusing on resource promotion and building that love of reading and that also that stamina. Because let's face it, kids are just so used to scrolling and having to click whatever, just building up that, those reading muscles. So it also types of reading that students might encounter, whether it's fiction, nonfiction. Again, our, through our virtual library, using those databases, using primary sources to, to use towards your inquiry. Another thing is balancing that print and digital media. So we're in, we're in the times where people are saying, do we really even need physical books anymore? Do we need that print anymore? Well, I'm sure some of you here prefer that book in your hand. I know I have family members that will never touch a handle because they want that, that, that book in their hand. But then we also ask ourselves, can we just get our kids away from those screens? Do they have to be on, you know, do we get away from that digital? Well, we want to say yes to both of them. So this is why we're constantly trying to find best practices towards defining this balance. And we do that by providing both types of resources in our libraries. And especially, you know, we're looking at our, our students and thinking about what they need. So that brings me to our representation for our school community. We're constantly looking at, I call them my clientele, like my, my customers that come in. I want, we want to make sure that when every single student or teacher comes into the library, that they find themselves on the shelves. They can find something that they can relate to. We're constantly having different people moving into town. And we just want to make sure that when they walk into the library, they can see themselves represented with different displays. Also from different needs that they need, whether it is something that they need more audiobooks or maybe they need to have bigger prints. We've had, we have situations where we have students that need bigger print. Little sidebar, I made my print future. This is print 24. But our collections can reflect those communities and our students. And, and so we're proud that we're constantly working on that. And especially in our PLCs, we get together to make sure that we are looking over, looking over our collections, pulling that data, data from our, from our libraries and analyzing it and working together to figure out what we need. We also borrow from each other a lot. So we're constantly emailing each other, like, I need this, do you have this? Or how can I get this to that? So it's helpful.
Alright, I want to make sure that this is, that does not become the star of the show. These are the financial considerations. I, I don't need to tell this board that costs of everything are skyrocketing. As a, as a team during the budget process, starting in the fall and sort of culminating now, we're, we're constantly having conversations a lot around the, what Kelly just shared, which is balancing the needs of students and, and what we want them doing. We want to make sure as a library media team that when we're budgeting for the, the upcoming year, we're really thinking about what we want kids to be doing actively. What skills do we want them to be developing? And do our budget priorities line up with what we want from students and for students? So there is that balance. We have to, just like every other department, not only within our school, but sort of in this country at this point, we have to make some hard decisions about where we're going to put our money, just to make sure that it aligns with what we're prioritizing for kids. And at that point, hopefully you've, you've heard through our presentation that very much right now, these are those critical problem solving skills that are in line with the vision of the graduate. So we're year over year trying to put together a budget that aligns with those K-12 skills and really puts our students in first grade, in seventh grade, in 11th grade and 12th grade, really in a position to be competitive when they, when they leave high school with that battery of, of skills. Again, I don't want to make that be the star of the show, but just, just know like everybody else, these are hard considerations that we have to make. An engaging collection is sometimes new with the, with the, like the, the most recent titles. That's what's going to, as Jamie said, have kids walking out and going home happy. But the reality of that is we can't have brand new books. We have to be smart about how we're maintaining those collections, understanding the, the financial realities of where we are right now. Jamie?
Wow. That was fast. Before I, I attack the last slide, I would just like to extend an invitation to any or all of you. If you'd like to come visit us in the library, the library is for everybody. And if you'd like to stop by and chat with us about what we're doing, we are always thrilled to see you. I will tell you, I am working from notes tonight because, as some of you in this room might know, I do tend to go on. And so I'm trying to stick to my notes. But I do have a lot to say on the subject of libraries. And so if you'd ever like to stop by and chat a little bit, glad to do it. That's one, yes.
I'm sorry, let me just pause you for one second. I, I want to make sure that, that you guys do understand, when we had this conversation preparing for this meeting, it was unanimous across all seven librarians. If you ever want to get into any of the spaces, they're all so unique, they all fit the school building. If you're curious, you know, we have a new, a brand new library at Latimer. The high school library has been redesigned. We have these, these new physical spaces coming in all the time that we're really thinking about and that we're really proud of. If you're ever interested, please just let me know.
I appreciate that. And I think what you'll find, even though there is an alignment of what all library medias are trying to do, centers are trying to do, you'll also find distinct personalities, just like you do in the schools. So hopefully you saw a little bit of that through the pictures, but you certainly feel that with the visit. So thank you for the extended invitation.
I would be remiss, oh, sorry.
Is that something we can just bend on a Jeff like flag for if we go back to onsite meetings, like maybe working that in like, if we show up?
Great idea.
Great idea. That's what we, that's what we started doing as a department, is kids going to our different libraries.
That'd be cool.
So I guess I'll try to finish this up. But before I do, I would be remiss in saying that one of our board members did stop by the library and actually bring me candy today. So not for nothing, but that's a great way to stop by the library. So yeah, there's that. So let's talk a little bit about the last couple of things on the list, right? The vision of the graduate and of course, spaces and resources. We want to start by telling you that we do so support, or we do so appreciate your support of the vision of the graduate work, right? Because that enables us to work with students on so many authentic skills throughout their school experience in Simsbury. And that's important to us and we appreciate the support of that. Your support of our library program, as Dave pointed out, is also key to providing the structure for this important work. As you can see, we have a kind of different view of how things work in the schools, right? We're fortunate to have that and to be able to bring different resources to bear. So as I mentioned, library media specialists have a unique impact on the integration of these skills across the district as well. I'd also like to point out an added efficiency in the library, and that is that we do collaboration pretty well, right? This is often overlooked, but because we collaborate with teachers who are in the room with us as we instruct students, we're also routinely providing professional development for teachers on myriad topics in areas of like information literacy, inquiry, technology, right? They say what? If you teach your, your children, you're teaching your grandchildren? It's the same idea, right? The expectation of that second grade activity that I was talking about is not that I'm going to go live in second grade now. But now that teacher has the knowledge and skills to extend that in the classroom with the rest of the work and bring some of those resources to bear on other things she wants to do. So it's like seed corn, right? This is what we're trying to provide as we do these kinds of bits with our teachers in our building. Spaces and resources, right? You heard Dave say it, people say it all the time. Library media centers are called the hub of the school. And I think for good reason. And by the way, it's purposeful. We try to create warm, welcoming spaces to accommodate our work in supporting all learners. And by that I mean, not just the kids, but also teachers and staff. If you take a look at our libraries, you're going to see everybody in there at some time or another, working on things. And, and, and that's purposeful to make it a place where people want to come and work. Our library team works every day to make our spaces the heart of learning in the building, right? And take that any way you want, but we mean it in all those ways. Like, we really do want to be the center of the building when it comes to learning. And we're positioned, by the way, with your support to continue this role, no matter what the future of teaching and learning looks like. For instance, this morning, we were having a conversation in our PLC about the implications of AI in education, right? I mean, you think about that thing I'm doing with second grade, maybe that's all out the window and I just have to ask somebody, hey, uh, why are ladybugs, do they have black spots on them? Right? Like, why do I need to do all this work? I mean, these are things that we really need to consider as a district, right? Because there are huge implications, not just on education, but also on the wider world. And our task is to prepare students for that, right? It's kind of trite now, but it reminds you that we are actually preparing students for a world that doesn't yet exist, right? There's one thing I do know, and I'll say this in closing, by supporting our existing resources and investing in future possibilities with us, you'll continue to empower us to effectively guide Simsbury's students towards success. And for that, we thank you. We appreciate your time this, this evening and we're glad to answer any questions that you might have. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Yeah.
I think it's great. I also think, I mean, I love the collaboration piece. I think that that's really critical. And I think that that's critical for future learning in every aspect of it, because I think of all the pieces. But you also have an amazing parental support and PTOs. And you've got a lot of parents that come through your, through your, through your libraries. And I think we always got to make sure we thank them for showing up and supporting you guys as well.
You know, I say half the job is PR, but I have to tell you, one of the, I've learned so much from the parents. Not only, some of the parents in Sims are kind of juiced, man, I'm just saying, right? Some of the things people do, I've, I've never, never ever heard of. And it's fascinating to meet people in the library. It's such a great, yeah. If you want to come in and read to some kids, we can set you guys up. It's a great, high impact volunteer opportunity and the kids, they love this stuff. So to your point, yes.
We're very fortunate.
We're very fortunate.
At Henry James, we do a civil war shark tank, where they get up and they, 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 we need sharks. So basically, come and be a shark and they have to pitch their civil war technology to you. So we always need sharks, so come, come do it. It's really fun.
It was awesome.
I think we're thankful for all of you.
I have one question. The, my only question was, in the new schedule in elementary, does it have, do, do all kids K through six come to you for a set period or, or time, or is it as needed?
Well, let me say this. The American Library Association recommends that libraries in schools work on a flexible schedule, which is not as a fixed schedule where they come at the same time over and over, but to again, approach some of these things at need. So if they're working a curricular area, that's when we work with the kids. We do have schedules in our building that ensure that every student comes up every week for books. We do book exchanges and things. And we work with teachers to schedule classes in, or sometimes grade levels in, to do specific work. Now, some places that works better than others. In some schools, they have had to make a more rigid schedule just because there's only one media specialist in the room. And so for the idea of predictability, right, to make sure that there's someone there, they will schedule certain things. Although that's, again, each has a benefit and each has, right, a drawback when you look at the schedule. But that's how, yeah. So to Sue's point, they are slightly different sometimes.
But kindergartners and first graders have weekly meetings with you, right?
We, yes, we do. We have, we have story hours for the younger kids at Squadron. We start in second grade to transition the kids. And it's funny because I talked to a parent last week who said, oh, I can't commit to my second grader. I said, oh, I'm sorry about that. I bet we can set something up if we really want to. But I said, but you know, in second grade, right, these seven year olds, they come up as independent library users. I said, they come up, they use the computer, they can find things. And let me just point out too, that gives us an opportunity to work with kids one on one as well, right? To learn some of their interests, to help to guide into things, to do reader's advisory with them, just to cultivate relationships with people in the building, which to me, alright, that's priceless right there, right? Working with kids on small groups like that, so.
I had a couple of questions. First of all, I completely agree with the hub aspect. I will say like, the one thing with like the librarians, like Mike, right, like Mrs. Hegney, a terrible, amazing. Like the kids will see her at the ice skating rink and go up to her and just talk to her, right? So like, they do, they grow with them, right? They don't rotate her. That's someone they can count on, go to. Like we'll say to them, I need to work on this report, like go ask Mrs. Hegney. So I think that's great and extremely valuable. So kudos to you guys and to her. Two questions I did have. On the digital versus kind of print media, if you will, are you able to kind of track the usage there and kind of, because I am curious on that. Like, I'm guessing the tracking will gravitate more towards the digital, I would guess. And then like, how do you, I don't want to say incentivize, but how do you promote the print copy when so much is moving digital? That's kind of question one. What was your thinking of that? Question two, and I know this may be to you, Dave, so chance to think was question one. You mentioned the budget and are there any recent, over the past couple of years with like budget considerations where you have felt like a pinch on that? I would be curious to kind of think if there was anything that you did feel the pinch. I know you kind of said it very politely, like balancing 21st century budget costs. But I do think it's always helpful to know like what the pinch points are so that we can consider those when we're going through that process. So figured I'd lay that out.
I'll start with the second one. A school system is like a major corporation, right? There's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts and there's a lot of considerations when you get to budget season. I think the only, I, I wouldn't say there's a, there's a pain point. I would say where, where we want to live and what we want the, the board to be appreciative of is when, when there's an opportunity to fund us, just know that we will always take advantage. when there's an opportunity to fund us, just know that we will always take advantage of it, um, and that we always have needs. So it, it really is, when, when we sit down to have these conversations and to make these decisions, and I'm gonna tee you guys up now, really balancing where we wanna put our money, understanding that there really is an all-out assault on the printed word, and we wanna make sure that kids are not losing the, the connection to that, but also these 21st century technology skills, we wanna make sure that they're competitive in that arena also. So I, I, I don't think I would point to a pinch point, I would say looking forward, we always wanna make sure that we're a part of the conversation, just because we do touch so many different curricular and social areas, if that's fair. So thinking about sort of, and I'll, I'll start this, I think there's an, um, as kids start to get older, the, the digital access starts to get more and more pervasive. So I think in early elementary school, there's a, there's a, and that's when kids are learning how to read, so it's, you know, it's, it's not surprising. But what we wanna make sure is that when kids get to middle school and when kids get to high school, it's not just a digital focus in terms of literacy, but we are still marketing those opportunities for kids to read. Um, incentives, contests, initiatives, things to make it fun and engaging is where I would go, and I'll, I'll leave it for you guys.
I mean, book promotion is a huge thing, or through our displays, also through book docs, um, getting ELA classes in and, and just, this is what's in our library, these are the nutmegs, thank you to the PTO that funded Henry James this year on that. The other thing that we have, because author visits are so expensive, we now subscribe to something called Book Break. We had it at Squadron, and that, when I was a fourth grade teacher, that was our special time. That, um, what it is, it's a subscription, basically, it's a platform where they pick, um, about, I think it's like 12 authors per year, and all different genres, all different authors, um, new ones, older ones, app. And what they do is, they, you sign up for a slot, and you, and they, there's, there's, each month, there's a different slot. And so say for instance, I think Laura's Lowry was one of them, and so, I mean, Laura's Lowry, I think she's in the nineties now. But she's, so what you can do is you can go in real time and present, um, questions to her, or if you cannot make it during that time slot, during scheduling conflicts, what you can do is then you can watch the recorded piece. But they touch on everything, like characterization, um, interesting, uh, as far as their, their whole craft. And so this is something that once a student sees something in the Book Break, an author, or a certain genre, then that, then, you know, triggers an interest, there are other books, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, we're very lucky that this year, actually for the next school year, um, Henry James is going to take that on, and we're, we're going to work, I'm working very closely with the ELA department to, 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 to do, to do this. So, um, again, it's all about selling, I mean, it's just, you know, it's all about selling, I mean, we're salesmen in a way, so I have to say. But, uh, just, it's, it's, it's fun to get them sparked about it, and, you know, you have those, those children come in. The biggest question I always ask kids, what are you watching on Disney Plus, what are you watching on Netflix, what are you watching on Amazon Prime? And then you go from there, and then you can find them their books that they are interested in, and, um, so it's a lot of promotion.
But I would say it also depends on level, as both of these guys just pointed out, right? Because at the elementary level, I have no problem getting books into kids' hands. Like, it's still, for a 500-year-old technology man, kids are all about the book. And it's maybe gonna be the right book, but we have no problem with that at all. And our digital books, I would suggest to you that, that eBooks, because kids don't have access at those young ages to devices, right? That they would maybe want in middle school for an eBook, they're gonna use a physical book, and they're gonna love the physical book. So we can always spend more money on physical books, they are gonna go, kids are gonna engage with them. So I think as kids get older, to your points, both of them, that's when we kinda see that disconnect, because, you know, bright, shiny, it's, it's.
And the nature of homework changes. When you're in elementary school, you go home and you read for pleasure. You take your books home, and we maybe squelch that a little bit when we get to secondary level, right? Homework's for a different purpose.
Kids are busy.
But then they get into certain genres, like for instance, historical fiction, and then you're like, wait a minute, historical fiction's is really great. And they come in, they said, do you have any historical fiction books? And, um, my library, our library is gentrified, which they can go right to the historical fiction section, and I'm just like, have at it, go, here it is, so. It's, so it does, it does spark.
So I have one question, Josh answered one of mine about the data. But the other is, across the elementary schools, um, there are certain books I'm thinking that most have, but do you use the other libraries, like, you know, we may not carry it, but I know I can get it from the other?
Absolutely.
We do.
We're constantly emailing each other, I need a copy, or even if my copies are out, they're backlogged, I'll just say, you know, you know, I have all different range of readers in our library, and so I will, I'll reach out to the elementary and just say, you know, do, do you have this book, can I borrow it? And we, that good old inter-office mail.
And we can see it, we can see it through Destiny, if we don't have one in a certain library, you can look it up and see if anybody else has it.
But it also gives you breadth in being able to order more.
Absolutely.
Have difference, you know, some similar and some different.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say the little thing about, I, I, you know, you can see little kids walking around sometimes and candy or book, and I mean, they can make a big thing about book, right? And I remember when the Harry Potter stuff came out, I was like, you all are reading those thick books like that, you know, so.
When I taught first grade, all they wanted to do is go to the section, the Harry Potter section, and walk out.
A bunch of books and scoliosis.
I'm going to read this.
Yes, I'm gonna read it, right? Great job.
Thank you guys so much.
I appreciate your time, that was a long time.
I love your time, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. So, next up is the strategic plan review. Yes, so, um, we have a quick kinda PowerPoint stack to take you through. We're gonna do a series of two meetings on this, um, and as I know you're all aware, one of our kinda heavy lifts as a group this year, uh, and administrative team as well, was to create, uh, our next iteration of the five-year strategic plan. So we're at a point where we want to start, uh, sharing pieces of that with the board overall, and tonight is really to tee up more about the process, uh, and share a little information, and then on the 22nd, uh, it'll have a little bit more of, I guess I'll call it like a workshop feel, a little more give and take, uh, a little more feedback and, uh, discussion around, uh, some of the key elements of the plan. But, um, we're very excited about where we've landed on this, it's been a, uh, you know, we've taken this really serious, it's a district that I've said before is grounded in the continuous improvement process. And this work is very representative of, of that. I was talking to Sue today, we, this is the time of the year where we meet individual, uh, individually, for a couple hours with each of our building administrators, and we talk about their strategic planning for the year, and what they see as that next level of work, and I just feel really good about the coherence of where we're going and what we've identified, and what's already moving, uh, boots on the ground, um, with our administrators. So really an exciting time, as I feel like we're, we've finally gotten enough of that distance away from COVID that we're talking about instructional improvements, curriculum, and really making nice traction in those areas again, so. So I have a couple slides just to tee it up, and I'm gonna hand it out, hand it off to Sue. But really, three outcomes tonight, uh, really talk about the process, as I said. We're gonna share our draft of the mission statement that the group, uh, came together on and get a little input from you, and then really set the stage for what we wanna do, uh, April 22nd, so we're gonna assign a little bit of, uh, homework for you. I know you'll appreciate that. Uh, but to get it started and get, get people in the thinking process and connect it to some of the past conversations we've had, uh, we're, we're titling this a warm welcome. So what we want you to do is, uh, you know, think into the future when this plan is in place, and what is something you hope to see? And just kinda take a minute, jot that down, Sue's gonna come back to that as we close. But as you think, you know, board members often have interest areas, different experiences, durations on the board, we've engaged you in a process around our goals, what is something that is important to you that you wanna see in that final product? And just take a minute and jot that down. Alright, um, thank you, and we'll come back to that, as I said. So just to go through a quick timeline of where this started and where we've been, this conversation actually started last May, uh, May of 24, we met over at the Firehouse. That was kind of our first meeting as a board, it was a workshop environment where we discussed different priorities that Board of Ed members had, that they wanted us, the administration, to start thinking about, come back with a report. And most importantly, as we've said, it's important for board members, uh, to communicate those priorities to administration, and administration to incorporate those into the strategic plan from a leverage and coherence standpoint. So that's where that work started. In September, we had another opportunity to bring the board together. We've had meetings with parents, the parent group, that Jen was very helpful in, uh, helping me revitalize this year, uh, with the PTOs. Along with Jen and Sue, we led a parent group through an exercise to get some input and feedback around our goals, our teacher groups, and then our administrators, you know, representation, significant representation, obviously, from the administrative group on multiple cycles, uh, the development of this process. And then in October, uh, we brought together our district strategic planning, uh, meeting group, that Sue's gonna talk about a little bit. And we've met month, we met monthly from October to February. Different iterations, different tasks every time, different assignments in between, uh, to put before what you have tonight as a takeaway is a, a real solid draft of where we are on this plan. So we're proud of where we are, open to adjustments certainly as we move forward, but know that we're, uh, aligned with the, with the values and the, the feedback you've given us so far.
So before we even came together as a district strategic planning committee, we took all of the information from those focus groups, from when we went with you, with parents, with teachers, with the administrators, and we pulled them all into themes based upon our goals. So goal one, around student growth and success, you'll see some of the themes there, around AI, around engagement, around special education practices and procedures. Goal two, caring and compassionate and connected school culture. This concept and this theme of belonging for all, of benchmarking some of our safety procedures, for really getting a handle around what are the behaviors we're seeing in schools, and what is our discipline approach? Goal three, around our premier workforce, uh, themes of diversifying our staff, providing feedback to any and all members of our staff around their performance, around professional learning communities. How do we differentiate support for our workforce based upon different roles and experiences? And then finally, goal four, around sustainable and strategic investments, uh, themes around capital improvements. How do we balance need with fiscal responsibility? And how do we get better around communicating relative to our budget development, approval, and then next steps? So, again, more detail than, um, probably we wanna delve into here tonight. What I do wanna share with you, that what we did after this strategic plan development draft, we went back to these initial themes, and I did a crosswalk of every single theme to make sure that what these focus groups said, again, even before we met as a committee, was reflected in this document. And I could do that one-to-one correspondence, and if you wanna see how I nerded out through that process, I'm happy to show you the results. But they're there, okay? So our goals for this district committee were twofold. We wanted the committee, and I'll get into makeup in a second, to provide us feedback on what's our next level of work here in Simsbury around these goal areas, and to work together as a working group to develop a draft by February. So check and check for the goals of the committee. There were multiple people on this committee, 22 in number, again, we met mostly monthly. We had dined administrators, uh, two role, uh, people from operations, uh, four of you as BOE members, and seven teachers. So some department supervisors, some general education teachers, special education intervention. So that was exciting to see the different roles and looks at our strategic work through this committee. And here were our topics, month by month. And we started off in October around what is the purpose of our committee, what were the goals? We also looked at a draft of a data dashboard, which you'll see reflected in the draft of the strategic plan. In November, we really grounded ourselves in mission, I'll talk about that in a moment, and really started teasing out in these goal areas, what is the work ahead of us? What are the actions that we wanna make sure are reflected in this plan? In December, we reviewed the draft of those action items, and in January, we started looking around, uh, design template and getting feedback on the layout of this itself. So it's taken a couple of different iterations, and we're excited to present a draft to you this evening, but we looked at this template through clarity, consistency, how does it appeal to the visual senses, and is it readable? Because this is going to be a public-facing document that really should give the blueprint of what we wanna get after to level up to that next level of excellence in the next five years. And then in February, we did a final draft review, and we broke a little bread and shared our good work and celebrated. Uh, I do wanna go a little bit deeper into the mission. So we, as a district committee, really talked about this in the month of November. The mission is really our guiding statement to frame out what we believe and value as a school system. It gives us inspiration when we need it, when the work gets tough, but it also gives us some brand identity. So after a couple of different iterations, here is our newly drafted mission statement. I will read it, this for, for everyone. The Simsbury Public Schools cultivate dynamic learning communities that foster academic excellence, character development, and a lifelong love of learning, preparing students to thrive in a complex and ever-changing world. So certainly you will see themes there around our vision of a graduate in those competencies, but we wanted to lift that and really make it about where we want to go as a Simsbury Public School district, okay? So as far as the last plan and this plan, I thought it would be helpful to share what's the same and what's different. So what is the same, first and foremost, is the goal language. Those four goals that are reviewed, we felt in all of those groups and in this district committee, that's the right work, around student performance, around our compassionate and caring school, around our people, our premier workforce, and how do we use our resources to make sustainable investments? We absolutely see that this plan will continue to be aligned with our building-based action plans. So this drives the work, and each school, if you think about it as a, a little visual here, here's the guide, and it is aligned with all seven schools and their school-based plans, and it really speaks to the uniquenesses of where those individual school communities want to engage in the next level of work in those four goal areas. And as Matt shared, we are a district of continuous improvement, so hopefully you will see that as you review this draft, see that process alive and well, that there's certainly a cycle of when we review data and look at how we're doing, and how do we use that information to inform our next level of work? What's gonna be a little bit different? You'll see, uh, some data and a dashboard, which we would see, um, being updated at least twice a year, associated with each one of the goal areas. So please take a look at that, some of our discussions that we had in our small groups here helped inform that data dashboard. So that looks different, and I think what you'll also see is that the actions are really more in, uh, grounded deliverables. You'll be able to see specific products, take some of the previous actions out of theory, and brings them into product and deliverables that we believe will level up what we do here in Simsbury. Okay, so that's the same and different. Uh, before I go into the adoption timeline, are there any questions about that process? Okay?
Sue, one question.
Please.
So kinda, the timeline, I, I appreciate the layout. How often is this gonna be revisited? I'm just trying to think, so this is five-year layout, and then May 13th, we adopt it, right, for approval? And then what, like, you see, I'm just kinda thinking ahead.
So we kind of pick up where our continuous improvement cycle picks up. So we will be having different, um, data markers of student performance, right? We will have some standardized data markers. As is always the process, the first thing that we do over the summer is we collect that data and flush it out. What did it tell us? Where have we made improvements academically? We will also have survey data coming in around climate and culture. So you'll remember that usually in the spring, we send out a climate and culture survey to parents, to students, to staff. We'll be collating all of that data as well. So the first thing is a data dive, and then how does that data help inform some of? And then how does that data help inform some of the priorities? Because you can't make everything a priority in the first year. But what does that data inform us is the most prioritized work that we have to do in each one of these goal areas. So our central office team, our teaching and learning team, will prioritize some of the first action items. I have an idea about what some of those are already, based upon on some of our discussions and even what the principals have talked about in their action plans this year and some of the unfinished work or that next level of work. Okay, so we're excited about that. So over the summer, Josh, we will take that information. We will develop our district priorities and then the schools will create their individual school improvement plans. And at the beginning of the year, that's what they start to report on, right? So that's when we have Maggie and her team come and share, okay, here's where we were. Here are some successes, here's the next level of work. And you get to start seeing that continuous improvement cycle that's aligned with this plan.
Sue, I would just jump in for a second. So we talk about that kind of high-level thought of coherence. I see us now with this new iteration of the plan and being in alignment. Our, you hit on it a little bit, our presentations coming to you are much more in alignment with these priorities. Right, so we'll just take the, something we just talked about in the finance subcommittee a little bit, like taking the time to go back, reestablish those next priorities on the capital improvement front. We will come out now and do a, right? A, a report on what that looks like. And then really when we talk about that improvement process, when it's wired well, kind of feeds itself that way.
I appreciate that. It's good that you're saying, right, there's lists, there's plans, and then there's actionable items. So appreciate it.
So as far as the adoption timeline, in your folders, you have a draft copy and this absolutely still is a draft. What we would like you to do is between now and our next Board of Ed meeting on April 22nd, is to read through the plan. And that little warm welcome and the little quick jot that you did, whatever that was that you hoped to see, look for it in that plan. And then on April 22nd, we're going to have, as Matt shared, more of a workshop format discussion. And we're going to ask you three questions. What are you most excited about that you read? What are you wondering about? And do you believe that we missed anything as we plan for the next five years? So we'll have that discussion on the 22nd. And then after April 22nd, we will make any adjustments based upon feedback that you've given, based upon anything you'd asked us to look at. And we would make those revisions and then bring the finalized plan to the full board on May 13th for your potential approval.
Homework. Got to give some homework.
But it looks like, it looks like you guys have done a lot of work. I'm really loving it. I'm happy with where we're at.
We're really excited about it.
It looks great.
I think it looks great.
Sue, maybe just a shout out to, I don't know the person who did it, the grad designer.
Thank you. Thank you. So in one of those district committees, we had a draft. And it was suggested, can we have someone maybe with some design experience? Not that this isn't fantastic, but yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so it doesn't look like this yet.
100%. So you will see teacher Megan Lavoy. She's an art teacher at the high school. She teaches design and she's been partnering with us along the way. We've been giving her drafts, feedback, changes. And she's been so absolutely responsive, but we should have been a little before and after. This is after, it's pretty incredible.
Pretty impressive.
Great, yeah.
She did a great job.
Thank you. For bringing up Megan, Megan Lavoy, she's fantastic.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the audit report.
All right, so we've completed our audit for fiscal year '24. I'm happy to report that we had a clean audit. Justin, Larsen, Alan, our auditors, came in and audited our financial statements, our federal single audit and our state single audit. And these are all related to our federal and state grant. We were issued the best opinion possible. We had an unmodified opinion and no findings reported on our internal controls. If you go down to about the middle of the exhibit, you'll see it says final budget, it says actuals, it says variance. That $3.7 million number under the revenues. We came in excess of budget by about $3.7 million. 2.1 was related to our investment income. $744,000 due to unanticipated state grants. We had some municipal revenue sharing money and some pilot money increases from the state. As you might be aware, we have our tax collection rate 98.5%, but our actual collections are 99%, so about $531,000 surplus there. And then about $120,000 surplus on our advanced tax receipts. Those are all the town-related items. The Board of Education-related items, we had a surplus of $86,000 for our tuition-paying students. We had about a $60,000 surplus from the rental income related to the use of our school, school buildings. And then we had a slight bump in fiscal year '24 of our ECS money for about just shy of $57,000. Any questions on the revenues? Onto the expenditures right below it, you'll see that our final budget equals our actual budget of about $123 million. We did not come in within budget. We came in under budget in total. It was about $2.1 million under budget. The actuals are trued up, the, I'm excuse, sorry, the final budget is trued up to the actuals as part of the audit report, but we did not have a net zero. So our 2.1 variance under budget, the majority of our savings was related to salaries and benefits. We had some vacancies of about $1.2 million. We had some pension savings, $185,000. And then smaller savings on some utilities, a debt service payment, debt service payment from our bonding that came in lower than budgeted on our interest rate. And then we utilized all of those savings and moved it out into our capital reserve fund and we contributed about $3.9 million into our capital reserve fund, which we've talked about during the budget process. Any questions on those expenditures?
I don't think any of them, we weren't able to follow.
We don't, we don't have the, the back.
I just have the breakdown of what it is. I can give it to you. It's just right in the audit report.
Oh, so you're just, okay, all right. That would be good to just.
Just have this.
Always nice coming in under budget, though.
Um, and then right below that, you'll see the excess of revenues over expenditures on the GAAP basis of that $7 million. And then you take that from your net transfers to other funds of the $5 million. So that's about $1.8 million that we contributed to our fund balance. The reason that we do this on the GAAP basis is because that's what the rating agencies look like, when, look at when they're looking at our fund balance. That's the number that they, they pull the, that they pull our reports from. So our general fund fund balance as of July 1, '23 was that $19,851. And then you take that difference between the $7 million and the $5 million above, that $1.8 million contribution. This gets you to your final balance for your general fund as of June 30th of that $21,668. And this is about 16% of expenditures, which is within the Board of Education's policy of coming in between 15% to 17% of expenditures. And then that last line just below it, that $1 million. These are parts of our fund balance that are assigned or already have a purpose related to them. So the non-spendable purpose over to the left, that $159,804, those are for any prepaid's that we had during the year that we have to pay out in the next fiscal year. The committed balance of the $860,000, that's your non-lapsing balance. And then there's a small assigned balance of about $25,000 related to some encumbrances that'll be paid out in fiscal year '25. And that gives you your $1,045,000 total.
Hey, I mean, general fund balance, $21 million. What's in the capital reserve? I know you mentioned that, total? Like six? Five?
Unassigned, I think there's six total, there's a lot more.
These are town-wide numbers.
Yes.
And then on the second page, the, the fund balance, it was a fund for the capital, for the CNR fund. So you can see the starting balance, about $2.2 million as of June 30th, 2023. And then we ended with a fund balance of June 30th, 2024, about another $2.2. So no real change from the prior year. What went in is what basically was spent. So it's a good position to be in. And then the last management comment that we have from the auditors as a recommendation is our accounting procedures manual. So this is something that we've been chipping away at in between projects, busy seasons. So hopefully that'll be finished up this year. Any questions on that?
Thank you. Great. Now come to our second public audience. Uh, as we talked about, the next, our next meeting is the 22nd, but we all know that the eighth is the public hearing. I please encourage everybody to, to join me.
We'll be there.
Be there.
What's the time?
Six o'clock.
Thank you for that. And with that.
The library.
It's at the public library, it's exposed. It's a terrible.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
To move.
We are adjourned.
For over 40 years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.